Virtual meeting, March 9, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. We have an invocation by Councilor Hoyt and a Pledge of Allegiance by President Pro Tem, Wardine Alexander. Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning. Let us bow heads. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you to stay. God, we ask that you continue to bless us and keep us in all that we do on behalf of the citizens of Birmingham. God, we just ask that you continue to guide us and direct us as leaders of this city, both the mayor and the council, as we are able to dispense our duties as those who have been elected to do so. God be with us through this meeting, and that everything we do will be for the empowerment of your people. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Y'all good? I can't hear you, ma'am.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mr. Clark. How are you?
Great, sir. How are you?
Doing fine.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Halyut. Councilmember Halyut. Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Smitherman.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Woods. Council Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Morning, President Parker.
Good morning, good morning. The, uh, made a motion on the minutes for September 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, who did the second? I'm sorry.
Williams.
Okay, you're here. Okay, my bad. All right. Williams. All right, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut, still out. Councilmember Hoyt? Yes. Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President Parker?
Aye.
All right.
And, uh, okay, the minute's not ready for the September 8th, 2020 through March 2nd, 2021. You want to go ahead and do the consent agenda, then I'll read the... Go ahead and read it. I'm sorry, Mr. Clark. The Council City of Birmingham, having reviewed the agenda presented for this meeting on March 9th, 2021, hereby finds, find that the proposed actions contained on the agenda to be considered at this meeting constitute essential minimal functions of this body. We need a motion.
I move.
Second.
Councilmember Williams, Council Pro Tem Alexander. This is for the essential items. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut. Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Council Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President Parker?
Aye. What I just did. Um, I think I hit something wrong. Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
I think I hit something wrong on my computer. So go ahead. Uh, okay, I've got it. Okay, I've got it. Okay.
So you ready for the consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the consent starts on page two with items one, two, and three. And on page three, we have items four, five, six, seven, and eight on consent. On page four, we have items nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page five, we have items 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 on consent. Page six, we have items 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 on consent. Page seven, we have items 24, 25, 26, and 27 on consent. Page eight, we have items 29, 28, 29, 30, and 31 on consent. Page nine, we have items 32, 33, 34, and 35 on consent. Page 10, we have items 36, 37, and 38 on consent. Page 11, we have items 39, 40, 41, and 42 on consent. And I think we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six addendum items, and item number 49 on the addendum is on consent.
Okay, um, there are dogs who want to add or take any. Okay, here in one minute. Um, let me read the tagline. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing is a request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. So a motion to consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
All right, I'll have Pro Tem Alexander and Councilmember Smitherman for that action.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut? Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Council President Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President Parker?
Aye. Okay, consent agenda passes. Clark?
All right.
First item.
First item should be item number 42. A resolution approving the best council city.
That was on consent, Mr. Clark.
I'm sorry, I missed that one. Um, it should have been on consent.
It was.
Hold on one second. Yeah, I didn't click it. That should be item 43, the first item.
Okay.
My apologies, sir. Give me one second to delete that.
You know what, Mr. Clark? Let's go ahead and skip over to the addendum items. We'll come back to...
Okay.
We'll, if you don't mind.
That's fine. Give me one second. Uh, let me add 42 where it's supposed to be here. Okay, so we'll go to the addendum items. First addendum item is item number 46. An ordinance to provide for the issuance of one general obligation series 2018 LR-SRF-1 of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, and maximum principal amount, not to see $467,000 to refund, by exchange, redeem, and retire the city's general obligation warrant series 2018 LR-SRF-1 dated March 20th, 2018, and authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to special authority loan condition agreement in order to extend by one year the repayment schedule of a loan to the city under the State of Alabama Land Recycling Revolving Loan Fund.
All right, do we want to take up 47 as well? Do y'all want to trade them separately?
Oh, let's take them up together.
Okay.
It'll be more fun.
Attorney, since these are so technical, the bond things, we might want to do them separately just to be safe.
Okay, all right.
All right, I need a motion on this one.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, uh, I missed the second. Who did the second? I'm sorry.
That was me, Council Smitherman.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Halyut? Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman? Councilmember Smitherman?
I'm sorry, abstain.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Council Pro Tem Alexander? Council Pro Tem Alexander?
We never asked for the question on this item. Mr. President, can I ask for a question? I know we're in the vote, or maybe I'll just abstain.
Yeah, I thought we were moving this before, the most...
Is that what we're doing, to move it before us?
So we can have, I thought that's what we were doing. Is that not what it was, Mr. Clark?
No, 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 sir. The item is before you already, so you just have to start the vote over. We'll just have to start the vote over.
Okay, ready. Well, President Pro Tem, I thought it was the most...
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So can I ask the question now? Is that okay?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm looking at this ordinance, and I know it's to extend the date. So I'm assuming this has already been approved and before us before, but, um, can I just understand, are we beyond the date, or are we doing this in order to, um, is that date before us? It didn't come, I don't remember this coming before budget and finance.
I have Attorney John Stanley speak to those dates. Attorney Stanley, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yeah, so in 2018, uh, the council approved the, uh, the ADEM Brownfield loan, which is issued through the Alabama Land Recycling Finance Authority, separate state authority affiliated with ADEM. They, the loan is broken into two parts. They're really identical. The city identified four properties that will be subject to remediation. And I think further down on the addenda is, uh, the bank school remediation contract. That, my understanding was that was presented to ADEM. ADEM's preference was that we extend the term of the loan agreement by one year. In order to, for them to review and approve that loan, there are some dates in the agreements, and we're basically about a year, uh, behind. Some of that's due to the COVID, obviously. And so the, uh, ADEM asked that we extend the dates by one year, uh, and so that's all these, these documents actually do. Uh, because the, the loan debt is referred, or is, uh, issued through a warrant instead of a note, we needed to basically, uh, refund and replace the warrant. But although the warrant does, all the loan agreement does is extend the payment dates by one year.
Okay. All right. Are you finished?
Well, yes. If I could continue with my question.
All right.
Thank you. So, again, just to restate, these have already been approved. This is to extend them for another year. And so the work has already begun, because, um, since I've served on the council, I believe we asked for additional monies for landfill and different items like that. So this is a continuation of work that have already been started or a commitment that we've been, has been made. Is that true, Mr. Stanley? Or is that...
I, I'm not sure exactly the status of the word, but it does continue the commitment, uh, that was...
That's already been made. Okay.
That was something ADEM requested as a condition to approving the documents.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, real quick, Mr. Stanley, okay. Councilor Abbott, I was gonna make a statement that I was gonna call on you, if that's okay.
That's just fine.
Okay. How do you get your attention?
Oh, we're still working through that, uh, but I, I know to, I know to check with everybody before we, before we finish up. Um, real quick, let, let me just tell you where the hesitancy is, uh, from some of the members on the council is. Um, there was a budget and finance meeting on yesterday, and I think a little FYI or little follow-up, I think, would have been appropriate. Uh, I think even if it had missed the deadline because of just hearing back from ADEM, even if it was on Friday, so, um, you know, as we move forward, let, let's make sure if there was a meeting on yesterday afternoon, uh, if, if, uh, we could communicate with our committees as we move forward, even though this is something that was approved in 2018. Um, moving forward, if we, if there could be some, uh, continuous communication regarding these type of matters, especially if there was just a committee meeting on yesterday afternoon, so, um, that was my, that was, I, I thought there was communication, so let me on my end apologize because this was an addendum that I did approve, but I thought there was communication with the committee, uh, either at the meeting or some communication that had taken place. But, uh, just moving forward, I would just highly recommend uh, communication moving forward. So, Councilor Abbott, please accept my apology on that. And, and, and where we always want, always respect all of the committees. Uh, so I'll do a better job, but if, uh, um, as we, as these items are presented, I just strongly encourage communication. Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, President Parker. Well, you tried to put lipstick on the pig, but the pig kept wiggling. So the lipstick went everywhere. You know, we had a budget and finance committee meeting yesterday. Administration members were on that call, and yet not one word was said about this, which just mysteriously skipped over the budget and finance committee, where it is required to go. I don't know who's to blame, but I do not consider us having heard something three years ago to be sufficient to bring it back to the agenda without saying one word. And like I said, I don't know who's responsible. This really just really makes me angry, and I'm just trying to get over it because it's just so obvious that somebody's trying to sneak something by for some special reason that we haven't identified yet, but I'm sure we will. And, and it just, you know, my motion would be to send it back to committee. But I want to hear what Councilor Hoyt has to say first.
Throw me up out of the bus.
That's, that's all.
Good morning, Councilor.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Good morning, sir.
Councilor, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Where'd he go? Did we lose him?
No, he's, he's trying to unmute himself.
Okay, okay.
Okay, is that, can you hear me now? Thank you, Madam Pro Tem, Pro Tem Pro. Um, yeah, well, my, my question is this. Um, I know it's been a while since we, uh, have entertained this item. Uh, at least, um, I know it's been discussed, but I'm just trying to see what is the reuse of this property? And why are we spending so much, uh, to mitigate, um, and no plans? So I, I just need to see the plans.
So are you asking about item 51, Councilor Hoyt?
I'm, I'm trying to reference, uh, item 51.
I think side 46, but I think... Forty-seven tie in to 51.
Yeah, well, I think they're all related, so I'm just asking the question as I'm asked to consider.
All right. Well, do you want me to start off with that, or with the administration?
Yeah, that's fine.
But since it's in my district.
It's your project. You know your stuff.
Thank you, Doctor. Uh, so y'all, y'all have probably are nauseous about hearing the word banks because it's been mentioned so many times in the last four years. Um, Banks, uh, high school site is something that y'all probably all know about. Um, it is, has, has not been used by the Birmingham City Schools for, uh, over a decade now, and, uh, under the, uh, I believe Bell Administration, the City of Birmingham acquired the dilapidated school. Um, and that was prior to me sitting on this, uh, body, so I'm not really sure what the, um, what the, what the thinking was of acquiring the old, some of these old Birmingham City School properties. But essentially what's going on is since the construction of banks has very thick concrete walls, um, it is sitting in Eastlake and is basically being used as a firing range, uh, for people to test out their, uh, or maybe not test, just fire their weapons inside. And it is something that is dilapidated and is a nuisance to the Eastlake community. And it's something that the Eastlake community has been asking for about 10 years be, uh, torn down since it does attract people living inside of it, no matter how many times we repair the fence around it. Uh, and it's, it's, it's just a torn down, uh, uh, building that, you know, has all, all the copper's been stripped out and is a, is a complete nuisance to the neighborhood. So this has, many iterations of banks has come before us in the past four years, um, from tearing it down to looking at, uh, ways that we can get the, uh, private sector to, to purchase it. Uh, I think two or three RFPs have been done since I have been on the council, trying to get, uh, a member of the private sector developer, um, uh, or just really anybody, uh, to, um, to redevelop that property or do something productive, uh, with that property because it is such a nuisance to that Eastlake, uh, neighborhood. Um, and so since those RFPs have not worked out, and we have not found anybody that has the financial backing or the ability to do anything with that property, uh, which I think half of it is to do with the fact that it is, uh, does have asbestos and other nuisances uh, that are hazardous to the neighborhood. So I think a lot of times developers don't even want to get close to it. Um, but, but this does is with the grant or warrant, um, on 46 and 46, the refunding of the warrant on 46 and the reissuance of the same warrant on 47, it allows item 51 to take place, uh, which is the actual demolition and, um, and abatement of those, of those hazards like asbestos and all that lead and all that other stuff that's in the building and get that out of the Eastlake, uh, neighborhood. And if, if you want more technical questions, Mr. Hoyt, around the warrant, I think that, um, maybe the attorney's office could...
Yeah, I, I just thought it was a little bit more concrete in terms of what we, uh, gonna do with the property. Um, not just to, to tear it down, but, uh, what is the reuse? Uh, particularly when we spend this kind of money, uh, to mitigate, um, potential pollutants, uh, with respect to the asbestos and the lead and all this other stuff that will, uh, become airborne, uh, once you, uh, begin the, uh, the demolition process.
Well, I think the reason that it's this amount of money is because they're actually doing the abatement of those hazardous items, the asbestos and the, and all that other stuff. And then they do the, you know, the wrecking ball. Um, or we'll get you out there with a sledgehammer, hammer, Mr. Hoyt, and, uh, and get that thing torn down.
Well, can I get the, uh, the tractor rather than the sledgehammer?
Well, Mr. Hoyt, if, if I get your support on this, I'll make sure that you get whatever you want.
Oh, my. Oh, my. Yeah, well, I know it's been a point of contention, uh, for quite some time. And I'm inclined to support it, but I just thought that, you know, good planning, uh, also comes with a, uh, with a good plan. And I, I've yet to see the plan. And I don't know if that's gonna be a aha moment, or, you know, something that's gonna sprang out next week and we'll know what it is, or, or two days before the reelection, we'll find out, but it's gonna be, you know, I'm just trying to figure that, all that out, you know?
Yeah, well, to answer your question on that, we've tried so many different ways with different RFPs and different things like involving uh, Auburn Urban Design Studios to come up with conceptual drawings and potential commercial uses for it, and have not been able to get any qualified person or company to do it. And I think a lot of it is the cost of, of, of demolition because it's, it is an ADEM site that has these pollutants on it. And so no private person wants to touch an ADEM site, quite frankly. Um, and, uh, this will, this will change that. This will turn, turn it from a brown field into something that, um, potentially a private person could do. But to answer, to get, to, to further answer your question, Mr. Hoyt, you know as much as I do about this right now, um, there is no, there is no, uh, plan. There's, there's no engagement with some private developer that, that's not being brought forth today. Um, there's nothing like that. So there's not gonna be an aha moment, uh, tomorrow. Um, but this is, this is where we are now in terms of, uh, getting this taken care of from the pollutant uh, and the asbestos, all that other stuff that ADEM considers this a, ADEM site.
So did we apply for a grant with, uh, with ADEM?
We did back in 2018, and so this is the, this is a continuation of the same grant that we already passed in 2018, uh, that we all voted on, or those of us that were here in 2018. The grant has a time limit dated to it, like a lot of the, uh, ADEM, uh, or a lot of these grants do, quite frankly. We, we, we are outside of the time limit of the grant that we passed in 2018. So we're just refunding that same grant and then reissuing it so that we can use the same grant that we passed in 2018, uh, for this site.
Okay. And is that gonna be enough?
Well, my fingers are crossed, but I, I, I think, I'm hoping so, Mr. Hoyt.
Well, you know, prices go up and things change, so I just want to be sure.
So yes, on item 51, it's the actual dollar amount, and it has six bids, and it's the lowest bidder. And so that it is covered with that grant, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. I see it. Okay.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize that. But, but yes, that's a great question.
Okay. All right.
And then President Parker?
Yes, sir.
May I say something about to, to Ms. Abbott and the other, um, uh, members of the council, real quick?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Listen, I, I completely understand, um, and, um, I, I really do understand that this, that, that the issue about this not coming, um, back to budget and finance and that Ms. Abbott's point of that this was done in 2018 is a long time ago. And, um, this Smitherman was not even, uh, and, uh, I don't, I don't think Ms. Alexander was either. He might not have even been on the council at this time. Um, but please understand that, um, that outside of the, the normal order of operation and the correct order of operation, that this is something that we have been, that I have been, and, and, and I think that we as a team have been, hopefully, um, talking about for a long time, is something that the residents of the east side of Birmingham and Roebuck and Eastlake, north and south, uh, Roebuck Springs have all been very concerned about. They don't want to grow up to next, they don't want their children growing up next door to a dilapidated building where people are firing, uh, semi-automatic weapons day in and day out. And we have an opportunity here where it might not be, it might, it might be our opinion that it's not before us correctly in terms of our internal policies and procedures, but we have an opportunity here to, to change something that the city owns. It's a city blighted property where we are allowing, um, things that we should not be allowing. We should be, we should be adding to the Eastlake community. We should be adding to the Roebuck community, uh, instead of having city-owned blighted properties that are taking away from the community. So I ask that my colleagues on the council, uh, So I ask that my colleagues on the council, while, while we, while we acknowledge this might not be here before us the way that we want it to be, that we voted on it all the way back in twenty eighteen, that we do realize that there are many thousands of people that have children that are having to grow up next to a site where people fire off their automatic weapons every single day, it's city-owned, it's blighted, and quite frankly, it's out of control and not fair for the east side of Birmingham. So I, I am humbly coming to you guys, asking you guys to, to realize that, I acknowledge, and I think we all acknowledge, that it might not be before us the way that we, that, that our procedures require internally, or definitely how we want them to be, but this is something that we've talked about for four years, and I hope we can do this for the residents on the east side of Birmingham.
Okay, alright, thank you, Councilor. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with this project. It is the disrespect shown to the council and the council committee system that is my beef. I'm no longer going to make my motion to send this back to committee. But if this administration does this to us again, I hope, I hope that the council will take action, because, you know, fool me once, shame on who? You know, we just, we, we deserve respect, and we don't get it. Do you ever try to get some information around here? You know, so, so that's my problem. It is not with the Banks proj, project. This place should have been torn down years ago, maybe when Hunter was still a boy. That's not the problem.
Was that two years ago?
The problem, the problem is the disrespect. That's, that's what makes me angry, is the disrespect. We had a meeting at three thirty yesterday, three thirty yesterday. You're not telling me that nobody knew about this until sometime after the meeting, because if somebody tells me that, I'm gonna tell you to your face, you are lying to me. So that, that's the issue here, and I hope that we will do better in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Will you let Counselor Smithman?
Oh, and, and do the.
Okay. Good morning, Counselor Smithman, how are you doing?
Good morning, I just wanted to ask Counselor Williams one question, I'm not sure if I missed it, what's the timeline for your project? So what's the urgency of it? So say, for example, if we delayed this, how would that impact the timeline of your project?
Um, I know that it's going to delay it because of the bidding, but does, is there a member of the administration that wants to specifically speak to that, or do y'all want me to take a stab at it?
Counselor, you can, but we also have a couple of team members who are here, Mr. Kelvin Datcher, we have Mr. Denise Bell, also from Capital Projects, who can speak to us with.
Well, I don't think anyone's seen Kelvin's face in six months, so who's got?
I'm having a hard time focusing now.
Good afternoon, Councilors, it is great to see both of you, Counselor Hoyt and you, Counselor Williams. But I will defer to our Director of Cap, Capital Projects, Ms. Denise Bell, who has been really, who broke the logjam with ADEM. This has been out there, and we've been working through this project with them for quite a while. And so, Ms. Bell, if you could walk through the timeline for, for the council, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Good morning, Denise Bell, Service Capital Projects Director. Again, so the Counselor Hunter, you mentioned earlier that we've had this money for a couple of years, so that's really the issue at hand, is that we've had money for some years that we haven't used, and we're on the summer months, so if we're gonna demolish Banks, this is the time for us to do it, is now, is to demolish it. If we continue to wait, you're just gonna continue to get the same complaints, and we're gonna get, continue to get the same complaints from ADEM, that we're not spending money that has been allocated to the city that could have been allocated to another municipality. So it's being, trying to be responsible, a little bit more.
Thank you. Yeah, the last part, the last part is what matters the most, is that ADEM telling us we need to spend money that was given to us. Um, I mean, I don't have a problem with the project, I just don't like getting things at the last minute, and then the fact that three of us weren't here in two thousand eighteen, that's not very fair. The Counselor, Liz, President Protim Alexander, myself, to be told that something was passed in two thousand eighteen and we were on the council, but I'm, I'm not gonna vote against the project, so, but thank you for that information.
Okay, Counselor Hoyt, did you?
Yeah, well, and, you know, and on a Women's Month, I was gonna support the women, send it back to the committee, I just thought I needed to do that, but since they have acquiesced, I won't be inclined to do so. I, I really do believe that this is something that, that need to be addressed, and I also want to have us to, to zero in on the power school, because it's implode, it's gonna implode, it's falling in. And, you know, we have children at, at Park Place, that to walk by this every single day is pathetic, you know, and it's a health hazard, because we had persons living in there that probably shouldn't be. And it's just, you know, it's just not fair that we would put efforts to clean up one community, and then we let one just go down. And this is in the city center. So I just want us to, as a council, just zero in on that, because it's, it's a, it's an issue, and I know Dr. O'Quinn is familiar with it, because he's gotten quite a bit of calls with respect to that. So maybe you can get some synergy, Dr. O'Quinn, and I'd be happy to support you as well. So I just think it's something that needs to be done. But you said they were shooting in the place with the AK-47, aren't you a police? Aren't you the POPO? You could have arrested somebody by now. Okay, anyway.
Thank you, Dr. Hoyt.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to ask one question, since we've been rounding around with this thing, what has been the holdup, and what is the reason that we have not spent this money in a timely fashion? Is it asbestos? I mean, what, what is the, what has held it up for the last three years?
Mr. President, if I can?
Yes, sir, I don't see you, but yes, sir.
I apologize, I'm taking my mother-in-law to get her vaccination, so I apologize. We at Counselor Abbott, we have worked development options and opportunities with the Auburn University Urban Institute. We have also worked through several community meetings about the building. We've issued two RFPs, neither of which resulted in a actionable response. So we have tried to seek out all kinds of development opportunities, so the city could invest these dollars somewhere else, if possible, instead of being responsible and us paying for the demolition. However, we're at the point now where we know that the site is more marketable, as a demolished site, as a cleaned site, as a prepared site for development, and so that's, that's the motion we're making, and the request was sent to you as well. ADEM, we've worked very closely, you may have seen, we saw the item last with ADEM, we've worked very hard to repair and restore the relationship at the state level across all agencies, and ADEM is a very important one, and we are appreciative of this grant slash loan, part of which is forgivable. And so we are moving now with all due haste. The bid documents for demolition have been completed and submitted to ADEM for their review. And so we're at the point now, where with your approval, we can move on this, on this, and Ms. Bell does have a timeline for demolition, and it will be completed in July of this year.
Okay, well, I just got a text that the district two town hall is tonight, so I think everything's becoming more clear. Okay, Mr. President, thank you.
Alrighty.
We do like, we do like, we do like the news, Ms. Abbott.
Yes, timely, very timely, now I know.
I knew it was a aha moment.
Yes, aha. Aha.
Hey Kelvin, you got a green light, buddy.
Let's, let's use this as a teachable moment for everybody. We take that away, a teachable moment on all, on all sides. Alright, Mr. Clark, we're gonna go ahead and move forward on that item and.
Okay, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember He's in. Councilmember Hoyt.
Resounding yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods is in. Council, Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item passes, we call up the next item.
Next item is forty-seven, an ordinance to provide for the issuance of one general obligation warrant series two thousand eighteen LR-SRF-two of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, a maximum principal amount not to receive four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to refund, by exchange, redeem, and retire the city's general obligation warrant series two thousand eighteen, that's LR-SRF-two, dated March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment, special authority loan condition agreements, in order to extend by one year repayment of schedule of a loan to the city under the state of Alabama Land Recycling revolving loan fund, the want will be issued by the Alabama Land Recycling Finance Authority. Motion, please.
Yeah, I don't.
Second.
I have Counselor Williams in, and with that, Smitherman or Protim Alexander?
Either one. It doesn't matter. We both did it at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any conversations, any questions, anything? Alright, we'll move for vote, Mr. Clark.
Okay.
Please, sir.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Council, okay, I'm sorry, let me put Councilmember Halyut and Woods in. Councilmember Halyut.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item passes.
Alright, we're going, we're still staying in the addendum section.
Yes, sir.
Item forty-eight, an ordinance to extend electronic meetings of the Birmingham City Council pursuant to the governor's extension of the state of emergency proclamation for COVID-nineteen pandemic. This is an item of permanent operation, so I need UC to pass it today. Motion, please, for UC.
I'm of approval.
Second.
Alright, Counselor Abbott and Williams for UC, and.
Yes.
Assuming everyone is still here, I won't take a chance on that, let me just go with Counselor Abbott.
Aye.
Council Halyut.
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn. Counselor O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Smitherman.
Aye.
Counselor Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item passes.
Motion on the item itself now.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, we got President Parker and Counsel Smitherman. Alright, voting is, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Council Woods.
Aye.
Council Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item passes.
Next should be item number fifty. Item fifty, on the same page, a resolution setting a public hearing, April the sixth, two thousand twenty-one, to consider the adoption of ordinance to Minnesota District Maplott City of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand twenty, that's twenty-five, to change own district boundaries from CB-one contingency neighborhood business district to QC-two qualified general commercial district filed by Michelle Ma Lo, resident and owner Teresa Hudson, for the property located at thirty-eight oh one Richard Erickson Junior Boulevard North, situated in the southeast quarter of section nineteen township seventeen South Range two West Birmingham. This hearing will be held in the city council chambers, third floor city hall, unless the governor's state of emergency proclamation authorization for electronic meetings are extended past March the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, due to the continuing COVID-nineteen pandemic. In the event that the governor's proclamation is extended beyond March the eighth, the council meeting, this hearing will be held virtually via Cisco Webex. To participate in this meeting, you will need to follow the link provided below, or use the call and information provided. This link will also be available for the public participation, even if the council meets in the council chambers. If you would like to attend via your computer, follow the link provided below. If you would like to attend via phone, dial one four one five six five five zero 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 two, and then enter one eight seven five five four eight six three five pound, pound. If you have joined by computer and wish to speak to the item, please use the raised hand button in the Webex application. If you are joined by phone, you will be given the opportunity to speak after the recognition of the speakers using the online platform. If you're joined by, the meeting by telephone and would like to request to speak, dial star three, and promptly during the hearing, please be patient, speakers will be given the usual three-minute limit for comments. If you have any questions, please, about participation in one of these hearings, you may contact the council's public information office by emailing kimberly.garner@birminghamal.gov. Motion, please.
The item.
Second.
Counselor Williams and President Protim Alexander, voting should be open, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker. Alright, that item.
Alright. Yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry, the item. Mr. Clark, I can barely hear you.
Did, did you declare the vote, I'm sorry?
I thought I did, but yeah, the item's approved.
Alright.
Okay.
Should be item fifty, fifty-one, on the same page, page three, I'm sorry, of the addendum. Item fifty-one, a resolution accepting the lump sum bid of Southeast Demolition and Environmental Services Incorporated, Montgomery, Alabama, in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars for the removal of hazardous material and demolition of former Banks School, this being the lowest and best bid submitted, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Southeast Demolition and Environmental Services Incorporated, substantiated in the form contained within the bid documents, in accordance with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract, not exceed the appropriation.
Move the item.
Second.
Alright, the item is before you.
Okay, we're ready, go.
Alright. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Halyut.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, that item passes. Got a couple of, yes, sir, we could do those.
Alright, item forty-three, on the regular agenda, it should be on page number twelve of your agenda, item forty-three, a resolution setting a public hearing, April the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to consider the adoption of a resolution to the vacation of three hundred and eight square feet of airspace along Second Avenue South, between Between Sixteenth Street South and Seventeenth Street South. And three thousand and seven square feet of alley right of way along Seventeenth Street South between Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South. And located at two oh one, Sixteenth Street South, sixteen twenty-one, and sixteen twenty-five Second Avenue South. On behalf of Red Mountain Theater Property Company LLC and Red Corner LLC owners. So that the developer can construct balconies on the proposed apartment building. Case number S U B two thousand twenty, that's seventy. The hearing will be held at a regular meeting in the City Council Chamber's third floor City Hall of Birmingham. On Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, commencing at nine thirty AM unless the governor's state of emergency proclamation. And authorization for electronic meetings are extended past March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one due to the continuing COVID nineteen pandemic. In the event that the governor's proclamation is extended beyond March the eighth, the council meeting and this hearing will be held virtually via Cisco Webex. To participate in this meeting, you will need to follow the link provided below or use the call-in information provided. This link will also be available for the public participation, even if the council meets in the council chambers. If you would like to attend via your computer, follow the link provided. If you would like to attend via phone, dial one four one five six five five zero 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 two. And then enter one eight seven one oh four forty-five forty-three pound, pound. If you have joined by computer in which to speak to the item, please use the raise hand button in the Webex application. If you have joined by phone. You will be given the opportunity to speak after the recognition of the speakers using the online platform. If you have joined the meeting by telephone and would like to request to speak, dial star three when promptly during the hearing. Please be patient. Speakers will be given the usual three-minute limit for comments. If you have questions, have any questions about participation in, in one of these hearings, you may contact the council's Public Information Office. By emailing Kimberly dot Garner at Birmingham AL dot gov.
All right, we have a motion.
I have Counselor Smitherman, Counselor, uh, Protim Alexander.
Yes, sir.
Right, items before you.
We're ready to vote.
Counselmember Abbott.
Aye.
Counselmember Halyut.
Aye.
Counselmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item, uh, is approved, next item.
All right, should be going to forty-five, which is. Basically receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent. Relative to the plumbing repairs of the Boutwell Auditorium.
Okay, all right, um, are there announcements for meetings?
President.
Yes, ma'am, that's right, yes, ma'am. Hold on, hold on, Ms. Abbott. Mr. Clark, I can tell you, you missed, you need.
Yeah, forty-four.
Okay, Counsel Abbott, can we allow the clerk to? He's got one more item, is that okay?
Of course.
Okay.
Item forty-four, my apologies, sir. A resolution setting a public hearing April the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to consider the adoption. Of a resolution extending to the vacation of six thousand three hundred and thirty-nine square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Twenty-Fourth Street South. And Red Mountain Expressway perpendicular to and between Ninth Court South and Tenth Avenue South. And located at twenty-five forty-seven and twenty-five fifty-seven Ninth Avenue South on behalf of the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District Owner. So that the owner can consolidate property, case number S U B two thousand twenty, that's seventy-nine. The hearing will be held at a regular meeting in the City Council Chambers, third floor City Hall of Birmingham on Tuesday, April thirteenth. Two thousand and twenty-one commencing at nine thirty AM unless the governor's state of emergency proclamation and authorization for electronic meetings are extended past March the eighth. Two thousand and twenty-one due to the continuing COVID nineteen pandemic. In the event that the governor's proclamation is extended beyond March the eighth, the council meeting and this hearing will be held virtually via Cisco Webex. To participate in this meeting, you will need to follow the link provided below or use the call-in information provided. This link will also be available for public participation, even if the council meets in the council chambers. If you would like to attend via your computer, follow this, the link provided. If you would like to attend via phone, dial one four one five six five five zero 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 two. And then enter one eight seven one oh four forty-five forty-three pound, pound. If you have joined by computer in which to speak to the item, please use the raise hand button in the Webex application. If you have joined by phone, you will be given the opportunity to speak after the recognition of the speakers using the online platform. If you have joined the meeting by telephone and would like to request to speak, dial star three when promptly during the hearing. Please be patient. Speakers will be given the usual three-minute limit for comments. If you have any questions about participation in one of these hearings, you may contact the council's Public Information Office by emailing Kimberly dot Garner. At Birmingham AL dot gov.
Move the item.
All right, Counsel Protim Alexander and Counselmember. Wood, uh, Williams?
Yes.
All right. Voting should be open. Counselmember Abbott.
Aye.
Counselmember Halyut.
Yes.
Counselmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Counsel Protim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Yes, okay, that item is approved. Is that all, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Counselor Abbott, please forgive me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the next virtual budget and finance meeting will be held on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at three thirty PM. Submissions are due by Wednesday, March seventeenth, which is Saint Patrick's Day, so you should be able to remember it. By noon, no exceptions. Any submitted afterwards will be put on the next budget and finance meeting agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am, and communication is the key.
It certainly is.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with you a hundred and fifty percent, Counselor Abbott.
Uh, Mr. President.
Okay, hold on, Counsel Abbott, is that everything?
That, that's everything, everything that's legal.
Yes, ma'am, okay. All right, Counsel Williams, you have a committee.
Uh, I more so just wanted to thank you guys. Um, this is essential that I thank you guys, um, for that, and, uh, and I appreciate, uh, everybody. Um, especially the three, um, lovely ladies on the Budget and Finance Committee that I know, uh, held their nose to vote for it, uh, because it was not out, it was the right thing to do and not. Because it was, you know, on the schedule correctly, on the, on the agenda correctly, so. Thank you, um, to the three ladies on Budget and Finance and happy Women's Month.
Thank you, Mother.
You know how to suck up, don't you?
I, I didn't hear, uh, someone mentioned something I heard about.
Um, I just want to, um, make everyone aware that, uh, on Monday, March fifteenth. We will have a education committee meeting at noon. And, um, that will be, uh, held, uh, virtual.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mister Parker, Mister Parker, I have an announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, yes, um, on behalf of the Utilities Committee, we will have a town hall meeting on March sixteenth at six PM. We're continuing to provide information regarding rent and utilities assistance. So on this call, we are scheduled to have the. President or the local, um, president of Spire Gas Company. As well as a representative for J C CEO. So you can find more of that information and it will be on the council page and on the D seven page. But that's Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday, March sixteenth at six o'clock PM. And you'll, it'll be a Facebook Live event. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is that everyone?
Mister President, uh, real quick, just wanted to, to thank you and, uh, Mister Fraser. Uh, doing a great job handling these virtual meetings. Uh, knew you'll be able to work the computer and everything, and I've seen a lot of other organizations really struggle, uh, moving over to virtual. So I did want to commend you guys for making sure ours went really smooth.
Thank you. Okay, all right, Counsel Williams, you close us out. Counselor Hoyt, I didn't, I'm sorry, I, I didn't. Counsel Hoyt, please forgive me.
Yeah, thank you. See that, Clint, when you give him praise like that and go to the head quickly, quickly. We have a, uh, transportation meeting tomorrow at, uh, twelve o'clock. And, um, and so just wanted to apprise everyone of that particular meeting.
Okay. All right, okay, is that everyone, um?
Counsel. Let me do this too, uh, Mr. President, before you.
Yes, sir.
Just want to wish, um, Ms. Melvin Langford a happy birthday. Our birthday is Sunday, and so is mine. So, uh, just wanted to wish her a happy birthday. You know, birthdays, uh, are important to most of us. So just want to do that.
Okay, great, thank you, and happy birthday to everyone. Um, Counselor Williams, you know, we would sing that to you, but we'll do it later today.
And that, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I would sing, but I know that Kimberly's gonna just mute me if I start, so.
All right, Counsel.
Well, happy, happy birthday, Ms. Langford, happy birthday, uh, Dr. Hoyt, and, uh, with that, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor, let it be known by saying, yeah.
Aye.
Okay. Be safe, everyone. Thank you.